I've asked, I've asked my buddy Horace to, to give the prayer tonight as our invocation. He's with Tabernacle Baptist, just Tabernacle.
Yes, sir.
Located on Daniel Ramey Lane. That's one of our newest street name changes. Horace, I'm glad you're here. If you would, take the floor.
Right. Glad to be here and thank you all for, for having me. Let us go to God in prayer. Father God, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, Lord God. We thank you for what your son, Jesus Christ, did on the cross for us right now, Father God. And we just come to you right now, Father God, asking that you will bless this city council meeting right now, Father God. We pray, Lord, that you will bless the members. We pray, Lord, that they will all walk in a sense of concern for the community and integrity for the community. And we pray, Lord, that you would just guide them with your Holy Spirit and help them to walk in discernment, Father God. And we just pray, Lord, that we will all continue to stay, try to be on one accord and come to a common ground right now, Father God. And we just say thank you for all those who are serving this great city of Monroe. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Horace. Ladies and gentlemen, Horace Willis has been with Tabernacle for a little over a year. And Tony Ramey has joined us in the back. We talked about you already, Tony, but thank you for coming. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present, save Mr. Boyce, who is not with us tonight. I do need to, before we get to the approval of the agenda, Brooke, I have Carver Middle School presentation that we need to move under section two in public forum and then just before public comments. So can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll offer the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second? Thank you, Tyler. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, the actual, that's the, that's the motion to move it to the second part, was the motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll have a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Motion by Greg, is there a second? Second by Ms. Crawford. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now moving to the approval of the consent agenda for council minutes from June, Planning Commission, Historic Preservation, Downtown Development, and Convention and Visitors Bureau from May. I need a motion for approval of consent agenda, please.
Need to approve.
Ms. Malcolm, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Samz. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, moving to our public forum. Brooke, would you like to come up, please? While she's walking, I had the opportunity to, to visit Carver to judge their science fair and spoke with Brooke. I think she was the second or third place that we visited. And the, the question on the table was, can you taste color? And we had Starburst and Fruit Loops and all kinds of stuff. And generally, I don't remember the findings, but you can't tell what any of those candies and stuff taste like. So, but the best part was the presentation. And, and afterward, I went and talked to a couple of teachers and I said, well, you know, who's the young lady that, that did, that did the can you taste color presentation? And, and they said, well, I don't know. And could you describe her? And I said, well, she talks like she's been a member of Junior Toastmasters forever. And they went, oh, that's Brooke Turkott. Every single one. I'm right on the, right on the bat. So I asked her to come in and talk a little bit about Carver Middle School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Brooke Turkott, and I'm a former student at Carver Middle School. I have been asked to speak to you today about the excellence of Carver. I'd like to start by speaking about the teachers at Carver Middle. The teachers I had were some of the best, and they taught me a lot. All the teachers were incredible at their jobs, and they have taught me both academic and life lessons that will stick with me for life. One of those lessons, probably one of the most important lessons, was that no matter what your test score is, it doesn't define you or your knowledge and your capability. They have challenged me and helped me to grow over the years and have prepared me well for high school next year. I would next like to speak about the extraordinary experiences and opportunities at Carver. During my time at Carver, I was a part of various clubs and after-school activities. I was even the president of both the Beta Club and the FFA during my final year of middle school. The clubs I've been in have taught me so much. I've gone to gone on numerous trips, even some out of state. However, above all the fun trips and activities, I have learned to lead and to be a role model. Finally, before I close, I would like to tell you all about the, about all the things that Carver has taught me. Sorry, I'm very nervous, over the years. Because for me, Carver, or middle school wasn't the worst years of my life. It was some of the best. Over the course of middle school, I learned to work hard because truly the amount of success one achieves is determined by their effort. I learned to face challenges head-on and with an open mind. All this to say, Carver is a phenomenal school that I take pride in being a part of. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
We are so lucky. Thank you so much. And you two are lucky. And you apparently are the rising star, so thank you for being here. Now, you really don't want to sit through this, but feel free. If you don't, you take off, that's fine. Next, moving to public comments. Giancarlo, are you here? Come forward, please, sir. Need to discuss parking.
Hey, how are you all doing today?
Great, thank you.
Sure you know me, I'm the owner of the Thirsty Moose. I know we probably may have hit on the subject matter, but parking is why I'm here today. Sixty-seven tickets, $3,000. If I don't pay them within sixty days, it turns into 5,695. These are my parking tickets and my wife, not for spending the day there in the parking spot, for pulling in for fifteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds, to be exact. Because it's sixteen minutes, you get billed for the ticket for $45. My restaurant backs up to a lot that is privately owned. I was offered a spot, but for $2,400 for six months, I don't see that's, I just can't justify myself spending that much money for two spots that I was offered. These tickets really are, because I do keep a log of when I do pull in the lot for just simply dropping something off at my restaurant if I cannot find parking. They grab your tag, they shoot you this nice little piece of the letter in the mail. And yeah, then it gets, it gets pushed to somewhere in Florida where there's no phone number, you can't contact them to at least justify the ticket or anything like that. And if you don't pay it, then it gets pushed to a debt collector. And good luck getting them on the phone, because I have tried calling them. It just, I, I know it's not you all's concern on this right here, but as far as my staff, my vendors, my alcohol vendors, food vendors, all of them get billed just for pulling simply in that back lot. I got handed a stack today from U.S. Foods that deliver Tuesdays and Fridays. If they're parked, if they are, if they pull in with their eighteen-wheeler and pull out, they get a ticket. My, as well as, like I had mentioned, my alcohol vendors that just want to pop in and say hello. If they're there for fifteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds, they also get a parking ticket. And they, they just read the tag, send you a letter in the mail, and that's where this is. So I guess really what I'm trying to get at is, is the concern for parking and the downtown authority. I know that there are some rules that need to be followed as far as aesthetics for downtown, but it is dearly needed. And I know other business owners are talking about it as far as their employees finding parking and having to have them reach out to us if they're late trying to find parking. I've had it happen multiple occasions, because they don't want to be late to work, but they can't find parking. I don't know what all can be done, but I just wanted to stress that concern to everybody today. This kind of stinks, you know, because at $3,000, I sure would like to just put it back somewhere else, but instead it's all gone to parking tickets. That's really it, y'all. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. I'm, I'm sorry that is, is happening. Have you talked to the, is that, is that Neil Jackson?
Yeah, it's Jackson Realty right here.
Okay.
I've, I've talked to him. They offered me two spots, but again, it's just-
That was the $2,400?
Yeah, it's, well, I think it's a six-month lease, and I've got, you know, at least I was thinking maybe just one. I think it'd be about 1,200 bucks for six months, or that's what they had posed to me. But, I mean, for $1,200, I just don't, and that's months of car payments. It's not just for a parking spot. Especially if you go back there right now, if you were to pull down that street and look behind my building, there are ten empty spots. On a Saturday night, there are ten empty spots. And I have pictures of, you know, just in case anybody ever asked. And the lot does not get used. It just really does not. Pulling anytime, I encourage you, drive down past Southern Brewing and look into that lot. They're just empty parking spots. It's, I know y'all can't do anything about the lot, but it just-
But it's still something to take into consideration.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I feel like it's not utilized correctly. And I mean, I've, I've also taken out of the kindness of my heart to pay my vendors bills, because, you know, when they're coming in and drop me a favor and, you know, you know, if I need a keg of beer on a fly and they run in and drop it off, and then they get it with a bill, I'll just take care of it. But that's it, sir.
All right. Thank you. On a, on a different note, Thirsty Moose on Saturday night, three weeks ago, was slam-packed, wall-to-wall. And from the time the person put a bottom in the seat to the time food was on the table, was thirteen minutes. Full staff, full restaurant, and it was packed. And, and you just did a great job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I do have to go, though.
Thanks, Giancarlo. Moving to the city administrator update, Mr. Probst.
We've got a full slate tonight, so I'm gonna dispense my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Oh, you skipped over. Well, I missed last month, so I'm gonna talk extra then. And since you passed over. No, if you've been by the splash pad at the Town Green, you'll notice that there is a rail up now between where the splash pad sidewalk is and the parking and East Church Street. So that was something that we had to come back in and add after the fact. It should work rather well. We hope so, anyway. It's better than what was not there. The Wayne Street lot, we have actually got plans back to expand that entire lot into parking. So I know, I think he just walked out, so that should help. I think there's sixty-eight spots now. The plan would add an additional forty-nine, so that would have one hundred and seventeen total spots in that area. But just understand, that's gonna be a little bit of time before that gets implemented. Under procurement side, it's been pretty busy. I've got two, two bids that'll come before you guys tonight concerning airport and CDBG. We'll hit that later. Our tap grants, you will see one come before you next month for an agreement to go into contract to do the McDaniel Street area. And then the other one is currently out for rebid. Will be back to us July eighteenth. And then it's essentially downtown, DDA. Firework show was, I would say, maybe one of the best we've ever had. I wanted to thank police, fire. Andrew, if you would, thank Garrett Range for me, because I stayed on the phone with him most of the day. He coordinated. Sandy Daniels, excellent job, excellent putting the program together. We have our Georgia Main Street program recertification coming up this coming week, July sixteenth. That'll be about a three- or a four-hour interview that we will have to do with our DDA board members and members of state staff to recertify our downtown. There is a back-to-school Splash Bash planned at the Splash Pad, a lot of tongue-tie in there, July twentieth. I think it's from two to four that afternoon. More details will be posted on social media. August second, you got a First Friday concert coming up. Our Flower Festival that was close to, I don't know, what, a thousand degrees that day? We actually had just shy of fourteen thousand people in town. So by about three thousand people, that was the largest that we've had. And then our Christmas parade, we had our first meeting this morning to start discussing that that's coming up. Our theme this year will be a children's toy parade, or a children's Christmas toy parade. So that should be fun coming up. It's one of Jeremiah's favorite event of the year. Yeah, and it's hard to believe, we're already talking about a Christmas parade. And here we are in July. So, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. Moving to department reports. Central Services, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Monroe Visitor Center, I don't, if any of you have been by there, you've obviously seen the progress that's coming along. They are around eighty-five percent complete. They've been a little dead the last week or two. We've been waiting on a, the color sample to come in for the new paint coating, the seal coat that's gonna go on the exterior. So that actually arrived yesterday, and we, hopefully by the end of the week, will have a sample area completed so that we can go out there and review that and make sure that everybody's okay with the color before they paint the whole building. After that, we're looking at about a four-to-eight week timeline for completion. Street Scan, they completed their data collection in town, so we shouldn't see them out riding around anymore in their scooters and their little cars with the camera. Right now, they're working to migrate all that data into the software, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, view those findings and their analysts this fall. The, at the airport, we have our pre-construction meeting with our engineers and contractor for the taxiway crack seal project that's happening. That meeting is gonna be July the sixteenth, and hopefully at that meeting, we'll, we'll have a start date for that project. In Childers Park, we're replacing some sidewalks in there, a lot of areas that have just been damaged over time, whether or not when we was in there putting in lights or whatever the reason might be. So we, we've got a contractor in there replacing a few areas. So just be mindful if you're using the park. And outside of those projects, you know, our, our crews, they're, they're, they're in our parks every day, they're in our downtown, and they're in our right-ofways, trying to maintain a beautiful and clean look for, for our community. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Coy? Thank you, Chris. We'll come back to you in just a second. Mr. Callender, code report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention briefly, the June Planning Commission meeting had a light agenda, as you'll see tonight, the item before you. But scheduled next week for the July Planning Commission meeting, there are seven total public hearing items, so that's ramped up substantially. I did want to note a few projects that are going on in town commercially. There are some pretty exciting developments going on. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the Ford building that's being renovated. That's currently in the review phase now for its permitting, as well as a adaptive reuse at the 200 Baird Street property, which is the back of Walton Mill, for a three-story mixed-use project, which will be pretty exciting. It's gonna have indoor parking inside of it. There are a number of projects that are ongoing in the city, as, you know, our monthly report that we provide to you is noted. I'm just hitting a few of those highlights. There's two residential projects under construction now, under review, excuse me, under review, not under construction. It's that incremental development that was on South Madison, and then the James South Road subdivision is currently in the process of being reviewed. We also have two final plats in the building you'll be seeing here in the next few months. I think the total lot count for all that, you're gonna see about two hundred and forty new homes for those final plats coming up soon. And finally, I just wanted to mention that the Form-Based Code review for staff is complete, and that ends the, the fifth of the seventh phase for the Form-Based Code process. So now, the, the draft is back with the consultant. They'll make their corrections, and then they will begin the public outreach process. And then a public draft will be made available for council and the general public to review. That process takes over a month, and that hasn't started yet, because we're a little bit off track with that Form-Based Code process. So that's moving forward, though. Now that we've gotten that part complete, it took a little longer than I would have liked, but it's done. And I look forward to hearing back from our consultant. That's all I have for the code office.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Callender? Thank you, Brad. Economic Development Report, Brian?
I didn't know before I walked.
Didn't know if you were just gonna stand back there.
It's all good. It's all good. Well, good evening. Real quick, just have a few items for economic development. We'll start with the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, which is something that I submitted an application for that back in May. So this is a little bit of an old item, but it's still in progress. And this is for the Monroe Water Tower sign monument that we're currently working on. I know we've talked about that a couple of other times. We've done the approval for the budgets on that. But anyway, if we, if we get this award, the full amount is for 50,000. That's what we've applied for. And if that comes through, that would cover the entirety of the monument installation, as, as I think I understood. The last one was 50,000 for IMEC. And those announcements, however, will not happen until like mid-August. So we'll, we'll find out something, hopefully next month. Downtown Hotel feasibility study, this has been an ongoing one as well. We've commissioned the Highland, sorry, Highland Group Investment Advisors to handle that, and they actually did one for us back in 2016. So give us an opportunity to see how things have changed over the last eight years and what kind of growth we've got in increased room demand for, for a hotel here. But what that study will allow us to do is gather some data in support of the downtown hotel. I know we've talked about that a little bit in some previous meetings, but this will be the first step in actually making that happen. So we'll get that again, that same group with the same set of data that we'll be able to compare back and forth to what we've already had once before. That should start, and I've got it, it's mid-July. I've got a meeting next week with the person who's handling that on their end. So we'll have some more details, you know, next month as far as how that's gonna, gonna work. But once they start that, I've already submitted a number of names that some people in the room have already given to me as far as contacts in the community who can speak to, you know, potential room nights for a hotel here, and what, what we would expect if we, if we had one, what kind of demand we've got. But that study, once that starts up, will take about eight to ten weeks roughly to complete. So we hope we'll, we'll know something in, in November, give or take, about what that data looks like. Economic Development Facebook page, this one's kind of my baby. Established that page back in early May, and, and this is basically a, a means of us providing some advertising for spaces that we've got that are available in both the downtown area and Monroe at large. So anyway, put that back up in, in May. We, right now, as of the time we did this report, or I did this report, it was three, three hundred and twenty-six followers. We're up to three hundred and sixty-three as of today. And that's just all organic. It's not a lot of advertising for that. We're just picking up and hoping that I can get some of Sandy's back there. She's got about 20,000. So if we can get about a quarter of that, I think we'll find some people who know some people who know some people who need to bring businesses. And that's, that's what we're, we're kind of working toward. But I've established communication using that with a lot of our area realtors. And that way, the hope there was to try and get some information about some prior, or prior to leases coming up for renewal, finding out about spaces that were gonna come, come on, on, come available, and try and match them up with some of the people who have shown interest through the page. And it's actually worked out a couple of times already, just in the last, I don't know, maybe two weeks. We've had two spaces that I didn't even get put up there, because the realtors reached out to me with those spaces, and I already had a list of people that were ready to go that had, you know, ideas for them. And so I've already signed a couple of leases in the last couple of weeks for those. So we just want to keep growing that. Shameless plug, if you're not already following it, I know you are, but if you're not, follow it. You know, go find it. I know it's, sometimes it's hard to find. The, the downtown one can be sometimes hard to find for me, too. So it's, it's just kind of interesting how that works, but go, go join up with it. And then last thing, downtown snapshot collateral redesign, and this is just kind of a minor thing. It, it's an item that we use to help, you know, offer some data points for people who are considering bringing a business into Monroe. It was a key point that was used, I think, with Logan, talked to Legabrielle, and brought them in. So we're just, we've got some outdated information and statistics in there. We're just working on updating that and some of the graphics. And so I, I've been working with Laura Beth on that. Laura Beth, you know, handles a lot of our graphics and such for our social media. And she is currently, she's got a good full plate, especially with the Main Street thing going on next week. So hopefully we'll, we'll get some, some headway with that later in the month. But that's it. Moving for questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for, for Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Brian. Yep. Not bad. First time. I'm gonna walk back now. Finance, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be as long-winded as Brian tonight. The finance report, as of May, you have before you. If you have any questions about it, please reach out to me. In the finance department, we have been working with Rodney and Mike Skies over the past several months for beta testing the Tanalyst AMI meter reading system. What this does is it gives us the option to read and turn on and cut off meters from within here, within City Hall. So we don't have to roll out a truck, a person all the way out to the other side of the city to read a meter, to cut the meter off, or turn the meter on. So plus, it gives, gives us a lot of data on our electrical grid and our electrical system. Rodney might touch on that now or later on. That's his expertise and his side of things. But we are beta testing that with about ten meters right now, and once we get that stood up, we'll kind of roll that out citywide. Also, we're gonna be setting the 2024 millage rate in August of this year, which will be next month. We'll be having public hearings to discuss that in the next several weeks, which a lot of you have already been in contact with Logan about that. So just know that that's forthcoming. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you, Beth. Chief Dykes, fire report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, you have the packet for incidents from May, and I would like to go over one or two statistics from there. First of all, we had a really good month when it comes to fires. We only had one fire, which is excellent, especially as we get into this time of year, because the, the less heat exposure we can put our personnel in, in, in with, the better. However, with that one fire, it was an industrial fire that was discovered early in the morning, and it did result in a multimillion-dollar loss for that facility, but there was no fire loss beyond the piece of equipment that ignited during the night. So as you see in your report every month, we do try to estimate the amount of loss and the amount saved from any of the fires which we respond. And on that one, it is going to absolutely skew our data for the year, but that is the cost of those massive transformers at the power generation plant. And, and just for the record, that was a multi-day event due to the burning mineral oil. And our unified command met with representatives from Georgia Power and other folks and chose to allow that to extinguish itself by burning itself out without any hazards versus creating some, potentially creating some environmental hazards by dumping a lot of water, foam, and trying to extinguish it and potentially polluting the ground and groundwater in that area. So that's just an explanation of those numbers, but other than that, it was, it was a good month. This month, for June, just had four of our personnel, myself included, attend the Fire Safety Symposium at Georgia Public Safety Training Center. So did a week-long of training for inspections, investigation, and fire safety education for our folks that are multiple certification holders, which is always good. And then last, county moved the Board of Commissioners meeting to tonight because of the Fourth of July last week. But last council meeting, if you recall, I, I was speaking highly of our crew that had a documented cardiac arrest saved from the incident on Church Street. Well, Walton County EMS is recognizing those folks tonight, right now, at the Board of Commissioners meeting for, for what they've done. And I don't know if the survivor was going to be present. That would be great if he was, but I, I did just want to, to share that as well. So hopefully that makes the Tribune and our folks get some positive public recognition from this. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Any questions for Chief Dykes? Thank you, Chief. Do you want to go ahead and take off and get down there?
I believe at this point it has hardly been-
You're saying we're more long-winded than David Thompson?
I believe they did it right before official-
I'm teasing, it's fine.
I did have someone representing our department on my behalf.
All right, great. Thank you. Major McClung, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So our numbers this year, this month, as compared to last, last year this time, we had calls for service. We had approximately 200 more calls for service this year, or this month, so far. Area checks, we performed a little over 1,000 more area checks in the neighborhoods and businesses since this time last year. Training hours, we're up about 50 training hours on the average for the department. Our Part A crimes and Part B crimes are both down as compared to last year, and our arrest rate is down. I did want to take a second, though, to mention, as opposed to 2023 this time last year and 2024 this time this year, our clearance rate for our CID, Criminal Investigation Division, has almost doubled. So they went from 37% clearance rate in 2023 this time, now they're over 51% in 2024 this year. Everybody talks about crime stats and crime rate numbers. In 2023 this time last year, it was 1522 was our national crime rate number. This year is 912. That's almost, that's literally almost a 50% reduction in crime stat, in our crime stat numbers. That's a huge reduction in one year. Our total offenses are down almost in half also, from 753 down to 385. However, our total arrests from the officers went from 389 to 299. So our arrests went down, and I can only attribute that to the hard work of the officers, the men and women of the Monroe Police Department. They're getting out there, being more proactive, as evidenced in the area checks. They did over 1,000 more area checks in the month of May. They're getting out there in the neighborhoods, they're being proactive. They're, we're not writing more tickets, but we're stopping more cars. We're identifying drivers and cars for the violations, and we're giving them warnings, but we're seeing if those are criminal elements in those vehicles. We're trying to take bad guys off the streets, and it's actually, it's working. We're doing a good job of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the major? Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Hope your arm gets better. Mr. Smith, Solid Waste, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Matches pick up, we were down last month. I mean, in May, I'm sorry. We only picked up 89, but they are starting to show up in dumpsters. So we picked up a pool of 10 out of the dumpsters in May, and we billed our little over half of them at $1,300. We billed for 62. Our charge report is still trending, same, we're less than 35% there we were back in 2022, of course, because of rate increase. So we're right at 6,000 tons we generate. Back in '22, we were bringing in over 9,000, close to 10,000 tons a month. And the last thing I have is, in line with our waste reduction goals, we're gonna reintroduce a tag, one of our customer tags, it's orange. And this notice is to help customers identify the items they cannot put on the curb, such as paint, oil, dirt, chemicals, HHW, that's household hazardous waste. And those cans, they have to be empty. You can't put them in a metal bin, but you can't fill them up, put them on the curb, and auto parts and building material, like brick, concrete, and anything that can't, they can't accept in MSW landfill. If they're mixed, it's gonna take us longer to clean it up, so it has to be so separated, and it'll be a lot faster, a lot cleaner, if you can do that. But if you see one of these tags, that's what this is. You'll get one, have a little candy cone on it, and it'll be sitting next to your pile if it's mixed up. And you call our office, 6933, and we'll help you get it cleaned up.
Thank you. That's it? Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Danny. Mr. Still, Streets and Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just highlighting a couple of areas that's in the report. The guys are out, trying to stay ahead of the utility cuts and potholes. We're putting down 20 to 30 tons a month of asphalt just in those two areas. But right now, we're in the middle of our L-MIG project. We're doing some patching through it and coordinating with the county. Just got the final numbers in for some contract work that we're gonna do to have McDaniel in Sarl Street milled. So got those numbers together, and I'll be coordinating with the county over the course of the next week about when they're actually gonna come in and start doing our overlay portion of that L-MIG project. Other than that, we're trying to stay ahead of everything, as well as the heat, and we're failing miserably in that latter area. It's incredibly hot, and dealing with 350-degree asphalt on top of this is a task in itself. But I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Still? Thank you, Jeremiah. Telecom, Mike McGuire.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, every month I come here and I say, we're gonna eventually get to the 50/50 mark. We are here. We have crossed over that threshold, finally. We're at 5149, so we have actually arrived at the point now where you've done more fiber installations than we have existing cable modem customers, and nobody's more thrilled than me sitting here at this desk, I can promise you. We're doing really, really good with our fiber rollout. Infrastructure-wise, when I say infrastructure, talk about getting wire in the ground, hung up in the air, in places where fiber's gonna be coming to. We're getting very close to being done with a large bulk of Monroe. Now, splicing is still catching up. That's the longest part. You know, you get the infrastructure put in, and you gotta come through and splice it all. But we're way ahead of our splicing, which is great. Means we got plenty of good work to do. You know, we're not gonna be sitting around thinking, well, what do we do now? We've got lots of stuff that we can work on, but we've crossed that threshold now, and we're getting pretty excited about that. With the eventual shutdown of Legacy Cable TV Plant in August, we will then begin looking at areas where we have just a few holdouts, a neighborhood that maybe has two cable modem customers that have refused to switch. I mean, people say, why would you not switch to fiber? There are people who have a hard time or just don't want to do it, it's just change. So we're coming up with a process to identify those customers, put a door tag on there, let them know, hey, you need to call us because we're gonna start decommissioning this cable plant. And when that happens, if you're still on this cable modem, your service is not gonna work. We don't want that to happen to you. We want to get ahead of the game and get you swapped, switched over. So that's been going really good. Kudos to one of my contractors who blocked out an entire week off of his schedule and worked with the Walton Village Apartments. We did about 76 units in there in about a week time. Anybody who was not our customer can easily be our customer now. Anybody who was our customer in that process, we just converted him during that process. So he knocked out quite a bit. And up in that attic, rolling around up in there in these hot temperatures, my hat's off to a gentleman by the name Cedric, but he did a fantastic job out there, and he just wrapped that up yesterday. So very, very happy with that. I'm working on a visual, hopefully within the next month or two, to share with y'all that will show you just where all of our fiber is and where it's been launched. And so you can kind of see in the grand scope of things just how much of this stuff really is out there. I've started putting that together today. It's gonna take me a little time to do, but I think it'll be something really good to look at when we're done. And the last thing I want to touch on is on the streaming side. Streaming's picking up. We almost tripled the amount of customers we had from last month. I anticipate that's gonna continue to roll forward even towards the end of this month with the cutoff date coming up. But the biggest question that we're getting from many people now is, I have a smart TV, but I can't find your app. And our frequently asked question page has it, but probably need to get this out there so people can understand a little bit more. The smart TV has to have access to one of the four major app stores, being Amazon, Roku, Android slash Google TV. We see this very common with LG TVs, Samsung TVs, Vizio TVs, we're probably the biggest three offenders. Those app stores are curated by the manufacturer. So they work with whoever the app provider is to put that on there, whereas we don't do that. We're just on the major app stores. So we are running into a little bit of, we go out to somebody's house to evaluate or help answer questions, or get them set up and find out that their smart TV is not one that's compatible with those app stores. There are options around that. You can buy a device to plug into it to get it going, but that is the biggest obstacle we're having right now. And so we're just trying to work on a little bit better education to get people to understand that. But it's going pretty smooth, and hats off to the support team that's spending out there every day in people's houses, helping them. I know I visited a house of a gentleman three times in one week and come to find out it was an issue with his TV. It wasn't so much an issue with our service. But just things like that that we're running across, it's new territory for us, just like it's new territory for them. So my hat's off to the support team for doing their job as well. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything.
Are there any questions for Mr. McGuire? Thank you, Mike. You've done an outstanding job. I appreciate you. Water, sewer, gas, and electric, Mr. Middlebrooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't much change in the report, so I'm gonna touch on a couple of grant stuff we're working on the last few months. Couple of months ago, you heard about the Department of Energy Grid Grant. That was a $9.5 million grant we put in for that's gonna reconduct eight and a half miles of our electric system. They're anticipating a late July response, so hopefully, we'll see that announcement soon. Since then, Department of Energy has released $43 million to JIFA to provide the same, which allows us to do another application. We're working on it now. It's approximately $4.5 million. It's a four-circuit, it's out of Station 3, had to replace 236 poles along with reconducing those lines. And lastly, we applied for the federal pipeline and hazardous material. It's a natural gas distribution, infrastructure, safety, and modernization grant. This is to replace our gas, our old steel high-pressure and low-pressure gas mains in here in town. It's a $4.7 million price tag, and it replaces the gas on 41 streets in downtown Monroe. The contractor who's helping us on this, he's won several of these lately, over the last two years. And he said this is one of the best ones he's ever seen. So cross your fingers, hopefully, we'll get that announcement soon. So if you've got any questions, I'll be.
That's good news, very interesting. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Thank you, Rodney. Mr. Croy, coming back to you, sale of surplus items?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, what's before you? We're asking for the approval for the sale of the first lot of surplus vehicles and equipment that we have. This particular list that you can see as an attachment is 30 units. Some of these units are across various departments. Five of the units are seized vehicles from the Police Department. Looking at that list, all the information is there, but over half of them are 20-plus years old. Many of these units have already been replaced with newer vehicles, and some of these were just being used as spares, you know, as we went along. But a lot of them are kind of beyond repair, or it doesn't, it's not cost-effective to continue running them. So just asking for your approval to sell these vehicles through GovDeals Auction.
Are there any questions for Mr. Croy? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving back to Mr. Bailey, Airport, please, sir.
Thank you. This is a request to approve consulting and engineering services for our airport. We're required by the Department of Transportation to, every five years, review our consulting services and to republish that for open bid for an engineering firm to come in. This year, we had two submissions, GMC, who is our current engineer of record, and Kim Lee Horn, who has a lot of aviation experience, too, around the southeast and the country. Our recommendation to council is to stay with GMC and for the next five years for our consulting and engineering services for the airport, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Bailey? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Sams. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. McClung, do you want to handle the SRO?
Right. I've had it, please.
This is the seeking approval for the School Resource Officer Contract for the Walton County School District. This will be also, the next one will be the Foothills, you may just do them both at the same time?
Let's do them separately, if you don't mind, please. I think we have three, right?
This is the agreement between the City of Monroe and Walton County School District for the School Resource Officer at the Monroe High School. Background of the agreement is to increase the security and safety of the Walton County School District, the funding necessary to permit the assignment of a School Resource Officer to serve Walton County School District on a full-time basis during the regular school year. The Monroe Police Department shall be compensated by the Walton County School District in the amount of $66,897 annually for the services to be performed under the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the major?
I'll just note, these are our standard agreements that we do each year for each one of these school systems.
I'll entertain a motion, please. Motion to approve by Ms. Sams, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Back to you, major.
The other one is for approval for the Foothills Contract for the City of Monroe. Also, an agreement between the City of Monroe and Walton County School District for the Charter School Resource Officer Program. Foothills Education Center High School at the Walton site, set the Monroe High School also for the charter school there. Background of the agreement is to increase the security and safety of Walton County School District through the funding necessary to permit the assignment of a School Resource Officer to serve Walton County School District on a full-time basis during the regular school year. Monroe Police Department shall be compensated at the rate of $210 per day, or that's $52.50 per hour, for 176 days for a total amount of $36,960 annually for the services to be performed under this agreement. Once again, it's the same as last year's agreement.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Major McClung? I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. George Walton Academy SRO, back to you, major.
This is also seeking approval for the School Resource Officer Contract with the George Walton Academy. This agreement is between the City of Monroe and George Walton Academy for the School Resource Officer Program there. Background of this agreement is also to increase the security and safety of George Walton Academy through the funding necessary to permit the assignment of a School Resource Officer to serve full-time at George Walton Academy during the regular school year. The Monroe Police Department should be compensated by George Walton Academy the amount of $60,000 annually for the services to be performed under this agreement.
Perfect. Thank you, major. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Mr. Middlebrooks, Ward for the Bypass Sewer Relocation, please.
Yes. Now I'm gonna ask you to spend some money. This is the, so when the DOT did the design for the bypass, we was notified that we'd have to relocate the sewer, but there was no design work, no, just basically, we've got to change the alignment. Once they got it cleared, we got out and shot grade, and it's sections of it are 30-foot deep. Actually, we did a profile, and you can see the depths and the estimates, but the low bid, we had two bids, two of the three responded. Mid-south was the low bid at 261, and Strack actually pulled their bid. So we're asking to allow them to, Mid-south, to come in and lay this line for us. We don't have the equipment nor the trained manpower for something that depth.
Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I have the golf cart going home.
Before the public hearing begins, the speaker conduct is posted in the lobby. We all expect everybody to be friendly, courteous, and professional, and we will totally expect that out of tonight's public as well. This is conditional use of 700 Breedlove Drive. Mr. Callender?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a remote that was working a second ago. It's a pretty straightforward request. This is for a music school at 700 Breedlove Drive. It's an existing office building. The music studio will be conducted inside the existing office building in one of the units, and I would have had the details on the screen behind you, but the applicant does propose to provide increased insulation inside the office unit to reduce potential noise levels. There we go, there's, hey, we just vanished. Well, that took care of that. Well, that took care of that. Anyway, anyway, this is straightforward request. Let's see. Plenary Commission made a recommendation that should be approved, as submitted without conditions, and I'll let the applicant embellish further on the application, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Calendar? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Ms. Teever?
I just want to say, we love being in Monroe. I've been here 15 years, 10 years, it's probably going to cut out, 10 years in Old City Hall. We're sad to have to move, but I'll tell you, we've never had a noise complaint the whole time we've been there. Even operating simultaneous classrooms, we don't bother each other. The noise won't be an issue. We've got the extra insulation just in case. I mean, we love being in Monroe. You see us at the farmer's market, the festivals, we support local churches, we're putting musicians in churches, we're putting musicians out in the public and in homes. It's giving children and adults, everyone of all ages, just a great way to express themselves, and I think we're a really positive force in the community. So we just hope that you'll approve this. I have some people here that wanted to support that were too scared to speak, so if you want to show your support by standing now, you may do that. Okay. Thank you.
That's a pretty good amount. Thank you so much. And I'm going to guess, we don't have anyone here to speak against the conditional use? Okay. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will come back to it almost immediately. Moving to new business, conditional use for 700 Breedlove Drive. Mr. Calendar, you just discussed it. Was there anything else that you would want to say?
No, sir, that was it.
Okay, I'll open the floor to council members for questions, discussion, or a motion.
I'd like to move to approve.
Or second, Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Gregory makes a motion. Mr. Gregory Thompson makes a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Were they all so easy? Do you want to go see if you can beat some raindrops, or do y'all want to hang out? Okay. I'll give you a couple of minutes. Yes, ma'am.
No, no.
Mr. Goga, if you would, make sure that door shuts between you and the lobby. Thank you. Because I think they're going to be standing in the lobby while it pours down rain, but we'll see. Moving to the application of beer and wine package sales for the Family Dollar 20209. The applicant Jasmine Leanne Patton is not here. Is the application in order?
Yes, Mayor, the application's in order.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Mr. Bailey. Grant Writing and Administration Services for 2025 CDBG.
Basically, took the words out of my mouth. This is a request for the approval of Carter and Sloot to serve as our grant writers, perform grant writing, administrative, and related grant services for the 2025 CDBG application, and then to pick up with our RDF project that we currently have ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Moving to the resolution for the ECG Voting Delegate, Mr. Probes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of housekeeping items here. We need to update our delegate. We are recommending approval of the ECG Voting Delegate Resolution, which points Lee Malcolm Vice Mayor as the alternate voting delegate.
Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that one to Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution for the MEAG Voting Delegate.
And likewise, for the MEAG Voting Delegate, to appoint Vice Mayor Lee Malcolm as the alternate voting delegate.
And are there any questions for Logan? And I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Crawford, and a second by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? I will tell you, at the MEAG Convention, I will be handling the election for the mayor's, so I might need you there. I'll confirm when I get there. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you. Moving to the temporary moratorium on all rezon and annexation, conditional use variance and certificate of appropriateness applications in the city limits, Mr. Probes.
Thank you, Mayor. That mouthful basically sums up the moratorium that we're asking for here. It's a very short one that we're hoping will expire on October 31st of this year, and this basically will help give us a little bit of breathing room as we move into implementation of the Form-Based Code that Brad spoke about earlier during his report. So essentially, what we don't want to do is have a rush of applications come through, and then we're kind of cross-stitching two different codes of ordinances together, which can create a little bit of confusion. I don't foresee this going past the proposed timeline here, but just for perspective on what we're working on, you know, the executive summary I sent you out, you know, at the beginning of the month, residential projects in some phase of pre-application, project discussion, review phase, something like that, we have 15 going on, and likewise for commercial developments, we have 13. And that doesn't include just the inquiries we got today. So it is just a little bit of a timeout, a breather while we put all the Form-Based Codes together, and then we can just open the gates again for rezones and COAs and so on and so forth, if that makes sense.
Are there any questions for Mr. Probes?
You think October 31st is very realistic.
I think so.
It won't go beyond that.
Brad, do you feel pretty comfortable with that timeline as well?
Based on the proposed timeline from the consultant for the adoption of the Form-Based Code, I do. We will go through, you know, advertisement period to, you know, for the amendment to our ordinance itself, and that's built into this time. I think it can be accomplished by October. Potentially targeting October as being the month of the adoption date, so even if it pushes over into November, I don't see a harm in that October 31st conclusion.
Also, if y'all are considering passing this moratorium, I believe staff is also requesting that second reading be waived pursuant to your ordinances, Section 2-96. So you'd really be taking two votes here, first, to waive second reading, should you so choose. That requires a three-fourths vote, and then a passing of the ordinance itself on the moratorium.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Moved away the second reading. Motion by Mr. Dickinson to waive the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that one to Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, I'll entertain a motion for the moratorium.
Move to approve.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Gregory, and a second by Mr. Dickinson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. You beat him by just so much. First reading of the Alcohol Ordinance Amendment. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance? We need it. Any questions regarding the ordinance?
I mean...
Do you want to talk about it, Mr. Probes?
Well, in summary, you know, last year, we adopted a resolution for ordinance to move pouring hours from 2:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and so it's been requested of me to bring this back up, to move that 1:00 AM time slot to midnight, 12:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, is just leaving New Year's Day as is to 2:00 AM, which was already in the pre-existing ordinance. And also, this creates a closure hour for establishments of 1:00 AM, so finish pouring at midnight, closure at 1:00 AM.
Kitchens don't close until 12:00 AM. Is that correct?
Yeah. Right. As long as it's pouring.
Food should be available until 12:00.
Yeah, it doesn't change that. That's already an obligation under the ordinance, so it doesn't change that. It changes serving time, and then it sets a time limit of 1:00 AM where patrons can no longer be on the premises. So the kitchen might still be cleaning up after 1:00 AM, but the patrons are not to be on the premises past the 1:00 AM closure time.
I liked the waiving of the second reading, too. Is that something we could do possibly?
You absolutely have that right, if you'd like to.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to waive second reading on this one as well.
I have a motion to waive second reading by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Sams. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Now, we need to actually approve the ordinance. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to adopt the ordinance, is written.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson, and a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Hours have been moved back to midnight and last, midnight and 1:00. That begins...
Now.
With your signature, yeah.
Great. I'll hopefully get that signed tonight.
Are we having anybody monitor this, PD or staff or anything?
We're...
Need to be checking to make sure these places are actually stopping people from out of your way.
We've had... Our office has been in contact with the police department. We'll continue to follow up with them as to the ordinance changes and addressing that. And Mr. Probes has been all over this.
Well, we'll also send out a notification first thing in the morning to all of our licensees to let them know that this is now in effect.
And it can't be a surprise to any of them. We tried to help. District Items. Ms. Malcolm.
Okay.
Ms. Crawford.
There's a community event in Maple Heights on July 27th from 1:00 to 6:00. Free back-to-school item, free food, health and wellness resources, sponsored by the Masonic Lodge, so I'd like you all to come out if you can from 1:00 to 6:00, July 27th.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. And that Masonic Lodge, they do a ton for that area. Ms. Sams. Ms. Brown. Mr. Gregory.
Just thankful for everything the city does. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Thompson.[1659.32]